Well, hey, everybody. Welcome to December's twenty-two, twenty-second, twenty-twenty Board of Trustees Meeting, six-thirty. To get started with, we'll call our meeting order. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll start it off, if you don't mind. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, folks. Crystal, you want to give us a roll call?
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Kenny. Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald. Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson. Mayor Hammond.
Here. Okay. Does anybody have any amendments to this agenda tonight that we need to know about? Okay, I have one, and I'm just going to throw it out there real quick, okay? This is a simple thing. On behalf of the mayor and the town of Board Trustees, I wanted to say a special thanks to our interim town administrator, Kelly Hootling. She took this job on for the last nine months, and she started it in the middle of an incident command structure that I have never been involved with, nor was I ever involved with a town emergency in a pandemic. And she held it together with minimal staff, I might add. And she just did a great job of getting through and trucking through all of these issues that we were working on. Didn't miss a beat. Did a lot of good for our town businesses and citizens and getting the information out there and getting the monies out there and just keeping this whole thing together. I think it was an amazing job, and I was very happy to work with you, as I know the rest of the board was. And I was very thankful for the Board of Trustees as well at working with you to help support you, keeping this, what I would call a family together during this whole time. And you helped us get to the point where we can hand off successfully to Patty Garcia, our new town administrator, which I think is a great addition. And we all want to wish you very well with your new family, okay? And a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas and all that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you have anything to say, we'd like to hear.
Just thank you to the Board of Trustees and staff for your support during this time. I'm so thankful to work for this organization. I couldn't be happier. Just thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kelly.
Any board members, if you have anything you'd like to say, please jump on.
No, I appreciate it, Kelly. Coming in as a new Board of Trustees, never having done this before into the middle of a pandemic, and you're about three weeks into the job. You did a fantastic job of helping me to get a handle on where things are at, and you've just done a fantastic job. So excited for you and your family, but very grateful. Again, you've set Patty up for great success in just what you've done in the time that you've been in that position. So thank you very much.
Okay. We'll move on, and we'll visit again soon. Item four, any conflicts of interest we need to be aware of tonight? Well, why it's not here, okay? So there you go. And then we'll move on to public comment. Now, this is a public comment for non-agenda items. So during this time, if you're a member of the public and you wish to talk on an item tonight, that's not on our agenda. Just raise your hand in the in the box, let us know that you're there and get, you know, give us your name and your address and report in, and then you'll have three minutes to speak on any non-agenda item you wish to like to speak on. So we'll turn it over. Crystal, do you see anyone that's not?
Mayor, we have Jenna and Mike Clark that would like to speak. If you can unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hey, I just, I really want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I just wanted to put forward that myself and a number of other members in the community have some concerns about the lockdowns and the effect that it's having on the businesses in our town. And just to keep a long story short, there's just about ninety of us now in a group that's called Wellington Freedom. And we're growing by about ten members every day, sometimes a little bit more than that, but nevertheless. And we've, we've been around now for two weeks. And the basis of the group is that we're looking to see our state open back up so that people can get their jobs back, so that people can get back to reliable income and, and making a living the way that we're all intended to. And we're, we're really concerned, but we see that a first possible step for us would be to partner with the town and be able to assure the business owners in some way that the town would not, I suppose, the right thing to say would be that the town would not participate in any punitive measures against a business owner who decided to open up. And I know there's a lot of opinions on, on this, but our, our core belief is that if you feel that it's unsafe for you to go into a business that's fully open, such as a restaurant, then you have the choice not to go into that restaurant. If you feel safe going into a restaurant that's fully open, then you can go in there, and we're all adults, and we all can take responsibility for our own lives and that of our families. And we just want to see that, that more bad doesn't come out of this. And, you know, just, just as a quick example, my barber in Fort Collins ended up committing suicide during the first lockdown because he lost his livelihood and he lost his way to feed his, his family. And desperate people do desperate things. So we don't want to see that happen to our businesses here in this town, and I'm not saying that it would. But, you know, things have gotten pretty extreme lately. So just to wrap it up, we're just looking for, for an opportunity to work with the town to let our business owners know that, you know, punitive measures may come their way, but it won't be from us. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir, very much. Mike, if you're still there, did you receive his statement at all from our town on any of this?
I didn't. No, I haven't seen it.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, we'll circle back. Let's move on. Do we have another comment on this or something else, Crystal? And thank you, Mike, for that. Your honor, minds, believe me.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Your honor, minds, trust me.
Mayor Hammond, we have Sherelle that would like to speak.
Okay.
Hello, this is Sherelle Teets, four-five-two-five Ingalls Drive.
Hello, Michelle.
Hi. So I'm actually jumping on to have kind of the same discussion as the gentleman before you did. I think what we're kind of looking for is the support from the town that if we do see our businesses open up, that even though there is these restrictions that are set in place by Laramie County and such, that we would like and hope that the Board of Trustees would be able to vote or do something in the lines of saying that while we agree their restrictions, we also are supporting our businesses and making sure that they're doing everything possible to keep everyone safe, but also allowing in-person dining, people to go back to the gyms, the sanitation that we understand still needs to be there. But a movement forward would be awesome for our businesses to be able to be able to open their doors again. I think the main concern comes from, like he was speaking on, is it's severely affecting business owners and restaurants, the gyms that are here local. I would just love to be able to see us as a town come together and show support for these businesses. One, it's great for them, but it also looks highly when you're looking at growth and infrastructure and trying to attract new businesses to town. The, these businesses that we're trying to attract see that the town supports their businesses and supports them enough to say we trust them to take the proper steps and making sure that we are keeping everyone safe and protected. But it's a huge kudos to the town of Wellington if it's saying, we know what, we understand, but we're going to allow them to open at this percent capacity. I think kind of what we're looking for is for the board to be able to vote and say, yes, we will support these businesses, even if someone tries to shut them down. We're not going to remove their liquor licenses or their business license. I think that's kind of what we're hoping to see out of some of this is the businesses seeing that we can do this safely and we have the support of our committee to do so. And that's all I have.
Now, Michelle, did you receive a statement from our town administration?
I did receive a statement. I think it was the same statement a few other people that had received in regards to you guys following Laramie County restrictions, and I understand that while following Laramie County restrictions is understandable. I do know there's other areas of the state that have went ahead and issued allowances for businesses to open up their doors and allow in-person dining and their gyms to reopen some. And so there is ways, there's got to be ways, because I see cities and towns doing this. I think Silverthorn was the newest one that went ahead and said, you know what, we're going to go ahead and open it up and allow in, in-seat dining. They're not going to lose their liquor license, la la la. So I, I do understand I received the email. It just seems kind of like a blanket statement for an understanding that while you'd love to vote one way, Laramie County won't allow you guys to do so. So I think finding out how these other cities and towns are going about opening up, even with restrictions set in place, would be super beneficial to helping our businesses move forward and reopening their doors. I'd like to go to church again, too. That'd be awesome.
Well, trust me, we all feel the same message. We, we feel the same message, but I thought in that statement, it did clarify our position on liquor licenses and closing down business licenses and that sort of thing.
I think the, what I understood in the statement was that as long, so pretty much it's following the Laramie County restrictions. That's what I understood, that it would be if Laramie County chooses to do such and such, that if they want to open, they have to make sure that they're doing Laramie County restrictions. I'd have to go back and read the email again.
You might reread that, okay? Because we put out a pretty good statement on our position. We're not, we're not dictating anything. Laramie County in the state is, we did put our position out there that, you know, they have their own enforcement agencies, not us. So we might reread that and see if that is not satisfactory, okay? But I appreciate you bringing it up. It is on our minds, and we are looking at every avenue. Trust me, our town is always looking at every avenue that we can do, and we'll keep doing it. We'll keep doing it.
Okay, so I think, I apologize, my statement came across as, and I'm reading directly from the email, Wellington, along with other cities and towns in Colorado, are required to adhere to the laws and rules that the state and county put into place. As a town, we are doing our best to help Wellington and have today have distributed three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-five to support local business. But it doesn't, so I understand that stance, but that doesn't speak to, yes, our businesses can open, no, we're not going to.
No, but what's one part you did miss in there was the part of revoking licenses.
So it just says business licenses and liquor licenses that are issued on behalf of the town of Wellington will not be revoked as long as the licenses are in compliance with local ordinances and laws. So that's local ordinance, local to town, or Laramie County ordinance?
Town ordinance.
Okay, so.
We have on behalf of the town.
Okay, so not Laramie County, but the town.
No, I, right, we won't speak for Laramie County. So, but we can, we'll go back and re-look at some of that, okay? Maybe we'll clear that up a little bit better.
Perfect.
I do have a quick comment on this.
Okay.
That statement.
Thank you, Michelle.
With, with that statement aside, just as a quick reminder for everybody who's on here, if we are looking for a vote, the best vote right now is your dollars. So when you spend your money at our, at our businesses, even if they are open at a very minimum capacity or only outdoor dining or whatever the case might be, that's the vote that really matters. So when we're talking about supporting our businesses, not to mention from the town perspective, all the dollars that we have put directly into the hands of our businesses, over three-hundred thousand already during this pandemic, your dollars are what keeps them running. So that's your vote, too. So just want to make.
That goes without saying. We encourage everything we can do to spend money on our businesses, and it would look great today, although we had a great, nice day out there, too. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, next. We will keep an eye on this. It's not done. I know. This is not over.
Mayor Hammond, we have no other hands raised at this time for public comment.
We'll bring it back to the board, but I wanted to assure the Freedom Group, and I haven't had a chance to meet with them, but I just want to reassure you that this is very high on our radar. And we're doing all that we can, and if there's another round of dollars coming out, which maybe, we'll be looking at that as well. And we hope to get back out of the red here soon, which it looks like we're on track. I think there's going to be some positive information coming up here in the next couple of weeks. With that being said, let's move on. It's not forgotten subject by any means, and we will be.
Mayor Hammond.
Yeah.
Sorry, I apologize. Kathy Wydellis did raise her hand to speak.
All right, well, let's open it up for her, and then, you know, and let's go.
Hey, I'm sorry to, I, I thought maybe somebody else was going to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I thought somebody else might talk, but I, I really don't have a whole lot to add. I just want to say I was, I, I concur with both the Clarks and, and Sherelle. I, my, my daughter and grandson just walked into the room at the time when I needed to hit raise your hand, so. Sorry about that. I, I just wanted to, you know, just say I'm, I'm in their camp, too, and I got that, that same message from Patty. And it, I, I like the way, I mean, I can, I can see you guys are wording it so that the, the businesses could probably get away with a lot of things that, but it's not real clear to them. But I, I understand that you guys might not want to put everything into writing. So, yeah, I, I, I don't usually go out to eat that much, but when the, when the restaurants are open, this, since this whole pandemic business, I've been, we've been making an effort to go out to eat a lot more than we ever would. My husband likes to cook, so we rarely would go. But, you know, the whole takeout thing and everything, that, that just doesn't work for us, and it's too cold to eat outside. So even if you're allowed to. So I, I'm just, just wanted to put my two cents in that I'm with the rest of these guys also. So thank you.
Absolutely, Kathy. Thank you. And, and, and takeout is a great way to help these businesses right now. Okay? I know, I know it may not be orthodox for people, but this is a great, safe way to help them, and it, that's the same dollars you would spend inside as you would take home, okay? So I encourage it. We do it. We get lunch all the time. All right, we're going to bring it back to the board now. But I appreciate the three comments. It's not over. All right. Moving on, item C, consent agenda. Meeting minutes from December eighth, twenty-twenty. Any changes or additions that someone needs to bring up or add here? I take that as a no. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda of December eighth, twenty-twenty, meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. All right. The action items. First one, new law enforcement service contract. This is Laramie County Sheriff's Department Staff Presentations, Patty Garcia, town administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Trustees. On your agenda tonight is the next round of, it's the next contract for twenty-twenty-one for the Laramie County Sheriff's Office Services. We have been using this contractor, a contract of such, since nineteen-eighty-three. Sergeant Riordan is on the call and has a short PowerPoint to go over the details. You can see from the information in the memo in the packet that the, the costs have not increased much. I mean, and what you do see as an increase is that indirect cost from Laramie County. We also have someone on the line from the Laramie County Financial Director's Office that can explain that information as well. So go on ahead and take it off, Sergeant Riordan.
Thank you. Crystal, let me share my screen. It looks like, see if I get it right here. All right, are you all seeing my screen?
Oh, yeah.
Good. All right. Well, as Ms. Garcia said, thank, thank you for your time this evening, Mayor and Trustees. Laramie County Sheriff's Office is, is proud to continue providing law enforcement services to the town of Wellington. And what you have before you tonight are two parts of the law enforcement agreement. The first part is the Municipal Law Enforcement Services Agreement. It's the overall agreement for services between the Laramie County Sheriff's Office and the town of Wellington that provides the framework for the services provided and, and what each entity is responsible for. It's a multi-year agreement that was last signed in two thousand seventeen, and the current agreement expires December thirty-first of twenty-twenty. This agreement in front of you now will carry us through the end of twenty-twenty-five. So the Municipal Law Enforcement Services Agreement has no direct costs attached to it. Those come in the annual statement of budget and work agreement attachment. And there are no major changes from the last agreement to this one. Following that, the, is probably what I consider the more meat of, meat of the document, and that's the Statement of Work and Budget Agreement. This is a document that lines out how many deputies, supervisors, et cetera, to be assigned or dedicated to the town of Wellington by the Sheriff's Office and their associated costs. So the deputies that you see in this Statement of Work and Budget Agreement are assigned to be in the, provide services directly to the town. So we're, the, these are the deputies that perform the functions of a police department. Is, is your town police department. One of the benefits to the town and to, into the county residents around the town is, unlike a police department, the, the deputies then work for the sheriff and are available to respond out, to assist other deputies in the areas around Wellington, especially north of Wellington, where deputies are scarce. And in, in return, the sheriff provides us with additional support in, instead of having to staff multiple people all the time to provide coverage to respond to calls, we've got deputies that respond from Fort Collins, La Porte, and other areas in the north half of the county whenever they're needed. So we did not put an increase in staffing in the request for twenty-twenty-one. We talked this through with the town and with where the town's budget was and where our numbers are as far as calls for service, not greatly increasing in the past three years. We thought that it was best to stay with the status quo for right now. So we'll continue to provide one sergeant, one corporal, six patrol deputies, one patrol deputy that's assigned as an SRO at Wellington Middle School, one desk deputy, and half of an investigator position. And the total cost for twenty-twenty-one is approximately three percent more than what it was in twenty-twenty. And as Ms. Garcia stated, most of that, really, almost all of it comes from costs that the county is passing through to us. So one new category on it is bicycle maintenance. Wellington originally purchased two bicycles for patrol, along with the associated gear for them in two thousand and six. By twenty-twenty, those bicycles were worn out, and we couldn't get parts for them even anymore. So the Sheriff's Office purchased replacement bicycles, and we added this category to ensure that there's money to available to keep those bicycles maintained and replace them as needed in the future. The, the other new category is the Laramie County indirect cost. So the county is charging the Sheriff's Office and other county departments an indirect cost fee on all outside service agreements, and this is a new thing for us. So for agreements where there are no facility costs to the county, which is the case with Wellington, where Wellington provides us with the office space, the amount is currently nine-point-five-seven percent of the salary amount in the agreement. And we agreed with town administration to incrementally add this to the annual agreement. We added three percent this year with the intention of increasing this annually by three percent until it matches the amount that the Sheriff's Office is paying the county in, for this year and the next couple of years until we reach that full amount, the Sheriff's Office is covering the difference out of our budget. So with that, I've got Sarah Pearson here with me tonight. She is Business Operations Coordinator for the Sheriff's Office. So she's not quite county finance. She's actually Sheriff's Office Finance, but she works directly with county finance personnel. And Lieutenant Bobby Mall, who is the manager that oversees Wellington Berthold and SS area programs in twenty-twenty-one. With that, if there are any questions, we're open to take those from you.
Real quick, before I give it to the board chair, the, the three percent, thirty-five thousand, it looks like, close to it, that you're going to accrue, how lo, how many years are you going to do that?
That's, that's annual, that's an annual cost. That's what the county is saying. So they're saying nine, nine-point-five-seven percent is what the county finances determined is the cost that the county incurs to provide internet, phone service, human resources, payroll, and, and other.
Roughly three, roughly three years of accrual. Is that what we're talking about here?
Well, so it's going to incrementally increase, and then by, by the third or fourth year, then it would match that whatever the county's charging to the Sheriff's Office would be passed through to the town.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions?
I've got a couple of questions. The first one, it should be fairly simple and straightforward, but just with the five-year contract, I understand there's no cost attached to that, but is, if for whatever reason, things change in two years, it's not working well, are there, is there anything that causes either side to say, you know, we need to go a different direction in that five-year contract?
No, in, in the, in the five-year contract, it's got termination clauses in it. So it, you know, for example, if the, if the town decided that two years from now or four years from now, that that was the time that they wanted to bring their own police department online, they could certainly do that, and there wouldn't be any penalty associated with that.
Okay. And be clear, I'm not saying, I think you guys, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, but I just wanted to make sure before I approve a five-year contract that it's not going to, you know, we, we might have, I pray, we don't have a new sheriff in five years, but who knows?
We're going to, we're going to have a new sheriff in twenty-twenty-two, unless somebody changes term limits between now and then, but
Gotcha.
So we will have, we will have a new sheriff in twenty-twenty-two, but I don't anticipate that that will change our working relationship with the town.
Okay. The other question I have, and this is actually a pretty major concern for me, is that, first off, I want to start by saying I appreciate that LCSO is taking the hit on six percent of that fee upfront and not just forwarding the entire fee on test, so thank you. But I have a major concern, I unfortunately have not had a chance to reach out to our county commissioners, but I will be, about the fact that the county is charging. Um, but I have a major concern, I unfortunately have not had a chance to reach out to our county commissioners, but I will be about the fact that the county is charging a fee to you as part of the county to provide services to us residents of the county. I can understand that if we're talking about county personnel going to Weld to provide services, but we're paying you to provide services to citizens of your county and we're already paying for staffing. So it is a big concern for me that the county is adding that charge on to work that you are doing within members of the county. So I don't know if we have anyone who could explain to me this, but that is a very big concern that I have and am not happy with.
Sarah, are you able to, uh, provide any additional explanation for, for that to him?
Um, we are in the exact same boat, um, we feel the same way. Um. Unfortunately, this is, this is not the first year that, that, uh, the county has been charging these, these, these prices. We have in the past said, no, our, our sheriff has said flat out, no. And, um, we have decided as an agency to work with the county a little more and say, okay, we understand those, those charges are out there, those costs are out there. Um, we'll, we'll start doing that. Um. I worked with the numbers this year and tried to, um, really, really slim down everything I could so that that indirect cost didn't really hurt the contract deeply. Um. Again, I, I understand where you're coming from, we feel that, we have the same conversations in meetings, um, with one another. Uh, if you could get that changed, we greatly appreciate that.
Yes, and so that's a question I, I have, I don't have an issue, and again, I want to be very clear, I, I appreciate all that you guys are doing as LCSO to work with this. But one thing that I would ask of the board, if we can either individually or if we can put together, and maybe I'm the only one who has concerns with this, but if we can put something together and go to Laramie County and say, uh, so, cause to me, that's, that's not acceptable. We are paying taxes as citizens of Laramie County. We are paying for the services of Laramie County Sheriff's Office to bring those officers out there and those costs do include paying for things. And so for the county to turn around and then charge the Laramie County Sheriff's Office an additional fee to provide services, again, I understand if this is to members who are not taxpaying citizens of Laramie County, but we're, the sheriff's office is tasked with paying, they're, it was serving the taxpayers of our county. And so for us, for them to charge an additional fee, I think is, um, completely inappropriate. And I would like to see us, uh, not push back on LCSO, but to go back to the county and say, you need to fix this or make changes. So I, that's something I would like to ask of our board, cause I don't think this is acceptable.
And you, and you do have, uh.
Other thoughts on that comment?
Coming in, so.
Other thoughts, board members? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's trustee Gator's request is not out of line.
I, I agree with, uh, trustee Gator on that. Um, obviously, if these costs are being passed through LCSO to, to, to the town, come stemming from the, the county board, then obviously there's, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't agree with it and I, I, I think that they, I think I, that we need to see an itemized breakdown of what those funds are going towards specifically, other than just a percentage of, uh, payroll that they've come up with. I, I think that they need to be transparent in what those figures are actually being used for, other than saying that it's a percentage of, of the, uh, the payroll that they're gonna charge, because obviously, I mean, are, are they chart, turning around and charging themselves 9.75% of their entire payroll to cover an expense for a department? I guess that's, I, I, I'm in, in agreement with, uh, trustee Gator on that. We should, uh, you know, push on that a little more to find out what that's going for. And obviously, uh, you know, maybe we can team up with, with, uh, the sheriff and then also Estes Park and is it Berthoud? Is the other, uh, town that's being provided the same type of service that we're being provided? You know, maybe we should team up together, uh, you know, us three entities or four entities and, you know, get some answers and, and maybe try to work that out. And obviously, you know, uh, Sergeant Riordan's not, this isn't his, uh.
Nope.
forte or his specialty is the, the finances, so this isn't anything, um, being put at you, uh, Sergeant Riordan or Sarah. Um, it's just a discussion we're having amongst us board members, but I think we should, you know, get some clarification and some explanation and to see if there are actually warranted charges that they're passing on or if it's this, you know, what it exactly is. So I'm in agreement with you, trustee Gator.
Uh, looks like trustee Kenny's in an agreement, trustee Whitehouse. Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, now we're trying to vote on this contract tonight, right Patty, is that case?
Yes.
So we can vote on this, but we're gonna still wanna circle back and get some answers, is that what I'm hearing?
I am fine approving the contract as it is, what I wanna see is us, not like six months from now, I would, and I, like I said, I meant to call Commissioner Kofalos today, unfortunately, I did not have time to do that. Uh, but I would like to see us as a town and board, I like the idea that trustee Jerome brought up, let's talk to Berthoud, let's talk to Estes Park, cause I'm sure they're getting hit with similar fees. And again, I, again, the issue is not with the sheriff, it's not with LCSO, the issue is with the county and that needs to go to the commissioners and whether that means they're coming to a work session or we're attending a work session of theirs or however that looks, that I think this needs to be addressed. So I'm happy to confirm the contract tonight, but I would like to see us immediately following up on getting this addressed.
I think, I, I, I think that's appropriate, okay? I'm in agreement, all right, and I.
I can handle that, I.
Let's do that.
Mayor Hammond, I will take care of that, reaching out to the other municipalities and getting some information back.
Yeah, let's find out, I have no problem calling Will down there in Berthoud as well, the mayor there or the mayor in Estes, I know them both. Um, but they're probably, it would be interesting, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna do that, all right. Uh, if any other questions? No, I really appreciate the, the, the service we get out of the sheriff's, uh, Mike, I really do, you guys are doing a great job and I really, you know, feel real good about having you guys on board. So, um, if that's enough, we'll just, let's just turn it over to the public for a quick comment, Crystal.
Mayor Hammond, we have Christine Gator that would like to speak.
Okay.
Christine Gator, 8132 Fourth Street, I was just wondering if you guys could, um, either postpone the voting or vote with the provision that the 3% will be taken off if, um, you find out that it can be, just so, some way so that it's not stuck in there. That's it, thanks.
Anyone else?
We have Kathy Widelis that would like to speak, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes.
I just wanna thank the board for keeping the sheriff's department. When I first moved here, they were, you guys or the trustees were considering getting a police department and I really think our sheriff's department is awesome. We recently had a interaction with, uh, Deputy Cabajal, C-A-R-B-A-J-A-L, he was awesome. I mean, total diplomat, really nice guy and I, um, I've, all my interactions with the sheriff's department has, have been wonderful. So thank you for keeping the sheriff's department this year. I, I think Christine's point is well-taken, but, um, I don't know, I guess I'm too trusting. I would have figured that if we can get rid of the 3% this year, that, that wouldn't be anybody's, you know, nobody would fuss. So anyhow, thank you.
Anyone else, Crystal?
Yes, we have Jenna and Mike Clark, if you can unmute yourself, you will have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, this is Michael Clark, I wanna thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I am federal law enforcement and so I'm coming in, uh, with a little bit of background on the issue. And I just wanted to say, uh, that I absolutely love the sheriff's office. Uh, I love everything that the sheriff has done and the coverage that they've provided for our town. Uh, I do side with Christine Gator, I would say, you know, uh, it's a, a good idea to vote with the contingency that, uh, we are able to, uh, cast out that, that extra percentage, uh, or meet with the county on that opportunity. And also, one other thing that I s- I did not see and I might have missed it, um, I didn't see anything in the contract about, uh, when coverage occurs. Uh, it, it was basically kind of glazed over and I'd like to see something in there that, uh, that basically speaks to, uh, 24/7, 365 coverage. Uh, if everybody, you know, follows what I'm saying, uh, just so that we, we know that we are always covered by the sheriff's office. And, uh, other than that, um, I think they're great, I love what they're doing. I'm also a bicycle, uh, police officer and, uh, and I just wanted to say, um, you gotta support these guys with that equipment that they need. Uh, police on bicycles are one of the most effective tools in the modern day, whether it be, you know, just to attend the well-arama or be in some sort of, uh, riot control capacity, uh, bicycle police are fantastic. So, uh, thank you sheriff's office and thank you board of trustees and mayor.
Thank you, sir. Crystal, anyone else?
Mayor Hammond, we have no other hands raised at this time.
I'm gonna bring it back to the board, uh, Sheriff Riordan, can you address the 24/7 coverage, please?
Yes, so, um, two, two parts of that, so we, what we do is we staff somebody, one of these, uh, six deputies, um, in Wellington is on duty, uh, from 6:45 in the morning until 2:30 in the morning. Um, and then from that 2:30 to 6:45, that little, uh, four-hour or almost four-hour section, um, i- in the early morning, that's covered then by, uh, the District One Deputy. So that we still have coverage in Wellington. Um, they drive, they drive through, they do patrols through, uh, during that time and they handle, handle the calls in Wellington. About, wh- when I was looking at our statistics, uh, recently, about 30% of the calls in Wellington are handled by deputies that are as, assigned to other areas, coming in and handling, uh, the calls in Wellington. So, um, hopefully that gives you a, a little, little bit of an idea and then.
One more time sheriff, on the percentage of calls handled by outside deputies?
About 30%.
During that off-hour time or is it around the day?
No, that's, 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 that's throughout the day, 20, and that, so, um, in, those happen, you know, if a deputy's on a call and another call comes in, another deputy that's available, uh, may handle it. If a deputy's, you know, booking someone into the jail and a call comes in, you know, another deputy, uh, from outside the town will come in and.
So, so is that how that works? If one of our deputies has to take someone to jail from here, they, they, they don't call Laramie County to come get them, they take them themselves?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah, the, the only, the only, uh, police department that does anything different than that is Estes Park and that's because it's a, uh, about a three-hour round trip for them, so.
Yeah.
So we, we assist them in that and meet them kind of halfway and, and transport their prisoners, uh, to Fort Collins.
Okay, understood. Uh, board members, are there comments?
I did have a, just a question that, the point that was brought up about putting a contingency in the contract, I don't know if either Mr. March or, uh, Sergeant Riordan or Sarah can speak to that, if that would be a problem? If we could put something in that, if we are able to successfully negotiate with the county, that they will not charge the fee? Cause obviously that would be the thing, i- if the county is going to charge the fee to the sheriff's department, I don't have a problem paying that, I have a problem with the county, but I don't have a problem paying the sheriff's department. Um, so if we, but if we can negotiate, would that be a problem if we can negotiate them to not charge that fee to the sheriff's department to add that contingency so that that gets removed from the contract?
Sarah, let me let you.
This is Brad March.
Take a stab at that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that, that will be removed if, if you are successful in working with the county to say they won't charge us, absolutely.
Go ahead, Brad.
My sense is, is it, you probably need to get this approved tonight. It, it seems to me that, and, and trustee Gator, you were kind of in the, in this position before where you approve it, you can always terminate it, I guess if it's, I think you made your, your position pretty clear, you can always terminate it if these, if your, uh, negotiations are unsuccessful. But I, it sounds like this is sort of an end of the day, end of the year sort of approval that needs to be given, if I'm correct. Um, that's probably a better question from Ms. Garcia. But I think this has gotta get done. I would think that we probably should just move forward if this, you know, if, if the board chooses to approve as-is and we're still look, you know, we're gonna obviously pursue, um, getting that fee either reduced greatly or it gone altogether, then obviously I believe we could probably do some type of addendum to the contract that would reflect, you know, that portion of the money being removed, you know, not being part of the contract anymore. But, um, I'm kind of in agreement with, um, the town attorney that I think this, you know, we need to move forward with this. I don't know that us putting a little, our own little caveat on the caveat onto it would be worth anything because unless the sheriff's department agreed to that caveat, they, you know, this is a, a mutual agreement, it's not a one-sided agreement. So if we throw a little caveat in there that we're gonna approve it, with the exception that we're not gonna pay that fee and then, you know, Sheriff Smith comes back and says, well, we're being charged this fee and we're not gonna cover it. So now this contract is null and void, now the town of Wellington does not have, uh, law enforcement coverage other than, you know, what the county would typically provide to anybody within the, the county. So I, I think that's the wrong move. We should just, uh, move forward with this contract and obviously, uh, pursue those negotiations outside of this contract. And if we're successful, you know, come forth with a, uh, addendum, um, that could be signed by both parties to make it official and then just roll on. But anything other than that, I think would be kind of counterintuitive and counteractive, so. Anyone else? Echo that somewhat, maybe to fill in a little bit, uh, my, my suggestion would be, if, we need to get this because we gotta have law enforcement. And it seems to me that your better answer is to go to the commissioners, advise the commissioners, this isn't acceptable. If, if that doesn't come to a, a, an acceptable resolution, then you've got six months, you give notice of termination and we can look at forming your own law enforcement, which would be the other answer. And that, this may be enough that you do that if that's a big enough deal, but you gotta have police protection.
Agreed, anyone else?
Is there any issue with Brad or Mr. March with us adding an addendum as trustee Jerome suggested? That's all I'm asking for, I'm not asking for, we will accept the contract as long as they don't charge the fee. I just looking for it to make sure that we have recourse that if we are successfully able to do that, to confirm that that does get removed, that's all.
No, I think that's exactly right, I think you go to the commissioners, you express to them that we've got a right to terminate it. If the commissioners are, uh, disinclined to, to, uh, remove that fee, then you've got the ability to come back at that point um, and, uh, evaluate whether you wanna terminate it, which the contract gives you the right to, but you still got law enforcement in the meantime.
Right, right, I think it's the point, okay. Any other board members on the same issue? No, okay, I think that's, I think that's easy enough, understood. We're gonna prove this, we're gonna add an addendum, we wanna put the option to remove this add-on from the county. In the meantime, we're gonna go find out what it is too, that they're adding on. And then we can go from there. But we need to prove this so we have our coverage, that's what I'm hearing. All right then. That's all, then I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve Laramie Enforcement Service Contract when they follow a year, 2021, with the addendum language included.
I don't think we have any addendum language yet.
I don't think you need any addendum.
It's if, if we, if we get the county to, to get rid of that, then we would do the addendum. Uh, but we have to, we have to go to the county first.
All right, fair enough. We cannot unilaterally change a contract at this point and put our own terms in because.
Understood. Okay.
I move that we approve the law enforcement service contract as written.
Second.
Second. Go call please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff. We'll see you out there.
All right.
We're going to move on to item two then. This is an ordinance number 22-2020. This is an ordinance approving a conditional use for a single family residence home within the transitional zoning district. Liz Young, Winnie, the planner is going to talk about it.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Can you see my screen share?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Liz Young Winnie. I'm the new planner with the town. I started in August, but this is the first project that I've been able to do from start from, from start to finish. So I'm happy to be presenting to you tonight. A quick reminder before we start talking about this. Just as a reminder to the trustees and that this is a conditional use process. And so it is a public hearing. The action for tonight is to decide to approve, approve with conditions or deny the ordinance 22-2020, which was provided in the packet and I'll go over some of the details of it. A little bit of information about the, the application that's being looked over tonight. To kind of first start out with just explaining the location of this site. It's at 3709 Harrison Avenue. So as you can see from the location map, it's just one block north of Cleveland Avenue and one block east of First Street. The conditional use application was already approved by the planning commission with the, the conditions that are outlined in the ordinance. Historically, this, the site has been used as a detached, single family home. And it's been vacant and is also nonconforming. The applicants wanted to revitalize the property. But because of some of the limitations with the nonconforming structure, they decided to scrape what was there and rebuild, which means that then they would have to go through this conditional use process because they're in a transitional zone district. So even though the, the use isn't changing and we're really kind of doing a like for like transaction, they, they had to come and present in this format. So a couple of highlights just from the staff report to kind of touch very briefly on. We haven't received any public comment via mail, email, or via phone. The use as well as all of the supporting applications, materials which were provided to you in the packet as well, and I have them pulled up if people have questions. Everything that they submitted satisfies the criteria for a conditional use as it's outlined in the code. As a result of, of their competency with submitting this application, the planning commission did approve the application with conditions. And again, we'll go over that in a few minutes and I also have it pulled up. The new structure is shown here on the screen. You can see the existing one is the small house. And then the new structure is this larger one that's off to the right hand side of the sheet that I'm showing. And it is in compliance with all applicable setbacks and zoning requirements. And they've done a really good job with the, the site layout. And like I said, they're meeting all of the zoning that we would ask from them. And then the elevation drawings make it look like a really nice house that they're going to build. So one final point that I think is really important for the consideration tonight is that we're really looking at replacing a single family detached home with another single family detached home. So there's really no additional impacts on infrastructure from like a water standpoint, sewer standpoint, roads. And there's minimal to no adverse impact to the neighbors. There's on almost every side, it's also single family detached homes. But since the site backs up to Cleveland, they're in that transitional zone district. Beyond that, staff doesn't have any major concerns with this as it's pretty much a like for like replacement of the buildings on the property. And the, the submitted plans meet all of the, the requirements from a planning standpoint that we would be looking for an applicant to, to hit. So staff does support the approval of the draft ordinance number 22-2020, which is here from your staff, from your packet. And there's four conditions for approval that are outlined in this down in the section one. And I'll just go over them really quickly. They're all pretty much engineering related. Just making sure that everything is getting to be in working order for when they do end up building this house. So the first is to evaluate the condition of the existing water meter vault curb stop and wastewater clean out and to repair and replace as necessary. Provide a grading and drainage plan with the building plans to demonstrate that the discharge of any storm water from the site will not impact adjacent properties. Repair and replace damage or non functioning curb gutter and sidewalk, including the driveway entrance. And the final one is kind of just standard language that the conditional use approval shall terminate upon a change in use of the property. And that's all I got.
Mr. Mayor, this is Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Liz did a great job presenting the staff report. As a reminder, the applicant would also have an opportunity to share any additional comments before you open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Rookie move.
There we go.
Sorry about that. What a rookie. Okay. Is the applicant on board tonight? Would they like to talk?
Hi, yeah, I don't know if you can hear me.
I can.
All right. Yeah, we're fine with all the conditions that you guys have asked for. And we've really, you know, had a great experience here working with Lynn and Cody, or Liz and Cody, excuse me. They've done a great job helping us put the package together and just putting it in a form that makes sense. So with that, I think if you guys have any questions for us, we're, we'd be glad to answer them, but otherwise I think they've done a great job representing us.
Well, thank you, sir, very much. And on your endeavor as well. So board members, any comments on this conditional use request?
The only question I had was if there are any issues with the conditions, but Mr. Porter already answered those. So I am glad to hear that it's been a good experience working with staff. And it sounds like everything is in accordance with what you guys are looking to do. So that's good to hear.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a great experience. So thanks.
That's good to hear as well. Absolutely. Other board members?
Want to say thank you and great job to Liz for what we're seeing in front of us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's offer it up to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board. Can I, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance number 22-2020, proving their conditional use for a single family residence home within the transitional zoning district.
So moved.
So that's second. Take a roll call, please.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay. Good stuff. Moving on. Item three. Resolution number 48-2020. This is a resolution waiving certain occupation taxes for 2021. This is going to be a staff presentation from Crystal Yunker, the town clerk. Crystal, yours.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. An ordinance passed in 1970 set certain occupation taxes for certain types of liquor licenses. And in reviewing those, staff created the resolution asking the board to waive the occupation taxes for those certain types of liquor licenses. Among those are liquor licenses for hotels and restaurants, beer and wine type liquor licenses, retail liquor stores. The total amount that would be waived from this ordinance would be $4,500.
And this is for the year 2021 only?
That's correct.
This is in it, this is in, this is in effort to relieve some COVID pressure?
That's correct.
Any questions, board members?
So I have a, just a question. Would this apply to those just renewals? Or would this also apply to new and incoming licenses?
Um, at this point, the occupation tax is due on January 1st, so it would be all the licenses that would be in effect right now.
Okay, perfect. So I think that is a fantastic idea. I am fully in support of this. So I want to make that very clear. I think this is good. I think we need to do it. The only concern that I have is that we have a lot of businesses that have also suffered such as gyms, salons that have been shut down. And I would like to see us do something similar to potentially the business license fees. If there is a renewal that businesses have to pay. And so as much as yes, I think we need to support our restaurants, bars, things like that. But we also, I know, have a lot of other businesses that got hit really hard because of COVID. And so what I'd like is, I know we're not going to do it tonight, but I would like to see if the board is in approve, approval of doing this to have staff come back with a similar resolution to do that for our other businesses as well that are existing, to have a similar thing in place in January.
Anyone else? Thoughts? Go.
The only thing I have is a question for Crystal is now these are business usage taxes. So they're specific to liquor? Am I correct? Liquor establishments?
You are correct. The, the ordinance that was passed in 1970 laid out specific license types and the amounts of an occupation tax imposed on those specific license types. So that's why this ordinance is, or this resolution is worded the way it is.
Okay, so basically the ones that were spelled out were pretty much the liquor establishments and then the hotel, obviously. But any other business is not required to pay this particular tax on when they, they get a business license. Is that my understanding? So if I were to open, you know, if I opened up a a five and dime or whatever, I am not subject to this particular usage tax. I would only be responsible for my business license fee, which is substantially less than these dollars that we're talking about. Is that correct?
That's correct. They would have to have a liquor license in that class to be, for that fee to be imposed.
Okay, okay.
And if I might, this Brad March, I, I would point out the business licensing is a fee, which is what we charge basically to offset Crystal's and other people's time. It's a nominal amount and, and the other is a tax.
Right. That's what I was trying to, that's why I was trying to make sure that I got clarified that, you know, they, these places are also doing a business license. And then they're also required to pay this tax in addition to their business license, correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead. I would urge against waiving the fee just because again, that's an offset for our costs. And it really does take cut time and effort and cost to, to regulate those businesses. We, and, and it is important that they be regulated that we know who's in town. And I, I, I think waiving the fee would be of nominal impact to the, to the owner. It wouldn't save them a whole lot of money and it, and it really is something the town collects to offset its costs. And so what you're doing is that, that point, you're definitely coming back and saying, we're just going to impose these costs basically across the board on this history, which doesn't seem right.
Sure. No, I, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that there was, that this was actually an additional item, you know, above and beyond the typical business license. Because obviously these establishments that are paying this extra tax are actually the high, the, the heaviest hit and they're still currently, you know, struggling with, with restrictions and stuff like that. So I just wanted to be very clear that, you know, and I don't know if anybody else knew the difference, like, because I didn't. That's why I was asking the question so that, you know, it's an additional above and beyond the, the typical business licensing fee that they have to pay this. So I just wanted to make sure of that. So thank you very much for that clarification.
Well, and, and if we could, I guess I'd like some clarification from trustee Gator. If, if you want the staff to go through and take a look at business licenses, we can. But it, but it seems to be, it seems that you're focusing on a different thing with significantly less impact tonight. So I guess I'd urge against that.
And this is Patty. We did look into that once we started talking about the liquor license fees and what it would take to not go through the business license renewal process. And the business licenses are $25 a year. That's all it costs is $25 a year for each business. And that is the way that the town can track what businesses are here, how we can help and support them. You know, those types of things. It is a nominal fee and it does help us with, you know, our economic development efforts and things like that in order to, you know, better track our businesses and help and support them. So if we were to not renew them, there's businesses that will drop off. There will be new businesses that come in that we won't know anything about. So it's, we kind of scrapped that idea and felt like the occupation tax was something that was truly under our purview and wouldn't, wouldn't hurt town operations at all and would help our businesses. So that was the direction we decided to go.
I do have a comment on that real quick. Although I understand this, the, the business license part may not be the way to go. What I do like is the effort and idea of whenever possible that we have a creative option to lessen the burden on our businesses, that we always take that route right now. So, but the nice thing is we have fantastic staff that looks for these opportunities, obviously, and ways to give money back or to work within our current situation. So I definitely am in a fan, a fan of that, as John mentioned, and maybe not necessarily through business license. But there's any other opportunity that arises and the town has the opportunity to lessen that burden, let's do it. I mean, or at least let's talk about it, right? The other thing I want to say is I'm fully, I'm fully supporting this current item that we're talking about regarding occupation fees. But my other question is why maybe we shouldn't do this ever? We shouldn't ever be imposing these fees. They seem insignificant. And if there was a business that wanted to do liquor licenses, they're considerable fees they'll apply for and get in liquor licenses. If they were starting now, especially during such a difficult time, those, those fees alone are a large cost. So maybe these, these, the fees that we're waving potentially for this next year could be something that we don't have going forward. So that is an additional consideration, not for what we're doing right now. I think we should prove it as is. That is my current stance. But as a different consideration, maybe we should make it go away altogether.
I would agree with that.
Anyone else? Because that's, that's something we needed. Those are two other items that we need to go talk about on a different subject. They're good ones. Both, by the way, all of them. And we will do that. We'll look into it. But on this issue tonight, anyone else? Okay, let's, let's take it out to the public, please.
Mayor Hammond, we have Kathy Wydellis.
Kathy?
Hey, anytime you can get rid of taxes is okay with me. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else?
We also have Jenna and Mike Clark.
Hey, thank you. I love what you all just said. Trustee Kenny, that was a phenomenal idea. And I'll just go with Mrs. Wydell and say anytime you can get rid of a tax, it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Anyone else?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
We'll bring it back to the board for a vote. Let's get a motion to approve 48-2020 Resolution waiving certain occupation taxes for 2021. It is spelled out.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Great idea, guys. Thanks for getting that done. Okay, we'll move on to item four.
Great idea, guys. Thanks for getting that done. Okay, we'll move on to item four. It's a resolution number forty nine dash twenty twenty. This is a resolution adopting our strategic plan. This is a staff presentation from Kelly Hoodling. Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor, Board, Trustees. Um, before you tonight is a resolution adopting the strategic plan. If you'll recall, um, this endeavor started back in June with a Board of Trustees Retreat to discuss the strategic plan. Um, for the folks at home, a strategic plan is a guiding document that helps set the direction for our community. Um, our mission that we have, um, and I believe it might be our first mission statement and vision statement um, for the town. Our mission statement is why we exist. Our vision statement is an aspirational statement, um, forward looking. So there is a difference between the two. And then we have these four key areas of focus and goals within each one of those. Um, so before you tonight is the resolution formally adopting the strategic plan to help guide staff in the direction. Um, there's a much larger document that um, we have shared in a previous uh, meeting that kind of gets into the nitty gritty of how this will be accomplished. But many of these items will have to come back to the Board of Trustees through approvals um, for, such as budget adoption, annual budget. Um, you'll have to see it through there. There might be some things that are high level policy direction, um, but in general, these were the items discussed uh, to get us onto that track of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two strategic plan. Are there any questions from the board members?
Or members?
So I don't have a question per se, because I know obviously I was present at the meeting where we kind of helped draft a lot of this. But I know I have received some questions from members of the community. And e- especially, I guess this is more of a future, if we can try to do this, is really try to have more opportunities for the public to understand kind of what goes, went into that. For a great example is, I know one of the um, goals on the sustainable infrastructure is to enhance and explore partnerships. And that's something that I've gotten a lot of questions about is, well, what exactly does that mean? Um, because that can come across as a little vague. We haven't really had a time to, prior to this meeting, for public to really have any comment or input on that. It just might be beneficial for future, because I know one of the things that we have talked about that would fall under that would be an example is improving our relationship with C dot as it comes to dealing with this state highway that comes through our town that causes massive numbers of problems. Um, that's definitely a relationship that we want to have a better, do a better job with in partnership with them, so that improve that. Similar with the county is as an example, this fee that we're talking about now, that would be another area we'd like to improve that relationship or partnership to help deal with some of these issues. Um, so just as a general rule, I think it would be great if we can try to at least maybe have a time prior to going through to actually vote on approving um, this in the future, that there's an opportunity for public to engage, ask questions and you know, for, because again, at this meeting, the board didn't have any public input. It was just the board there um, to see if we need to make any adjustments or tweak anything for future. That's my only thought process on that.
Other thoughts? Okay, well, I do believe, I know this, this document does get updated. Trustee Gator and the, 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 what you brought up said exactly a good point. So I do know that we can come back to that as we go forward and re, and refine this plan. This is not my first strategic plan that I've been involved with here, and I can tell you that. And there'll be another one. Because it's, it's something that we refine, redirect. Uh, if there's no other comment, we could turn it over to the public that we have right now, see if there's something that they might want to bring up that we can put on our list. So let's turn it over.
Mayor, we have Sherelle. If you would unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, there. Sherelle Teats, four, five, two, five Ingalls Drive. I don't know if I have to keep repeating that or not. Um, I'm looking at part of the strategic plan where it talks about intentional growth and development. And your goal number two, it says identify, attract and retain commercial development and business. Um, is there anywhere in your strategic plan where it goes into more detail about how you guys intend to accomplish attracting and identifying more business to Wellington?
Kelly, you want to take a stab at it?
Um, sure. If I could share my screen, a crystal, maybe? Let me see if that works. We do have a more in-depth document, um, talking about economic development um, and working through some of these things, a strategic plan. So there, there's a lot of work that we'll need to go into what that means to accomplish this high level goal. And so again, that's why I think um, I mentioned that the board will have, and the public will have to have a lot of engagement throughout this whole process. Um, but particular for that item, there's going to be a lot of steps along the way to keep both the board and the public involved uh, and engaged to this effort.
So, yeah, I think that, that, I think that the message here tonight is these are the high, um, the high level goals, and there's a lot of backup behind it. We even have market analysis, data and things like that that actually talk about strategic businesses and market leakages that we have occurring, that identify the areas that need to be uh, filled, or where we're actually losing revenue for the town. It's quite extensive and uh, it will be put out later. I do know that. So to answer the question to our caller that uh, we are, we do have backup and further information that supports these higher level goals. I hope that, and we will be making that available soon down the road. So I hope that answers the question. Uh, that was a high level approach. Is there anyone else on the public that might want to chime in?
Yes, Mayor, we have Christine Gator.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I'd like to, the potential of changing some things. Um, intentional growth to be changed to free market growth. Sustainable infrastructure to improve and maintain infrastructure. Community engagement be changed to engaging with the citizens. Organizational strength to be changed to community strength. Um, and in case if you're wondering and thinking that the change in words is just semantics, tomato, tomato. Um, let me give you an example of um, what James Madison did. The Virginia Constitution Draft stated, all men should enjoy the fullest toleration in the exercise of religion. James Madison petitioned and successfully had these words changed to read, are equally entitled to the free exercise of religion. This slight change was important because toleration implies a favor granted, whereas free exercise uh, recognizes an existing inalienable right. So, um, my point is world, words matter, um, because they convey and imply ideas. So example, community engagement um, implies that you want the community to come to meetings, to be engaged in what you are do, doing. Where I think it should be the other way around. The town should be engaging with the citizens. So under sustain, sustainable infrastructure, I want to see um, it plainly, plainly saying fixing the streets, snow plowing the streets, improving the water treatment, improve, improving the water billing, charging people for what they use, um, by charging them by tier rate instead of by base rate. Under the community engagement, town reaching out to citizens with mail newsletters and water bills as an example. More town hall forums for citizens to meet with trustees, more advertisements such as billboards, banners, or direct mail to let people know what's going on. Under the organizational strength, um, I feel like that's all staff related and it doesn't really benefit the citizens. So I want to change it to community strength. The true strength of Wellington is our community activities, CAC activities, parades, and other activities that build our community and supporting businesses, as we already talked about um, during these covid lockdowns. So those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Christine, I appreciate your comment.
Well, wait a second. Yeah, that was pretty comprehensive. That pretty well struck it all down.
You do such a great job with your comments.
They're good comments. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, we have Kathy Wydellis.
Okay.
Hi again. I realize I never gave my address. It's three, four, zero, five Revere Court. Anyhow, first thing I'd like to say is I read the strategic plan thing that was in the work session and there was something that was changed that I really appreciate, and that was from the memorable experiences of through recreation and cultural stuff to community activities. I really, really am glad, I don't know who did that, but I really am glad that that got changed. Because like Christine just said, one of the reasons I even moved to, to Wellington is we came to the parades before we even moved here. So that, you know, this year we didn't have the Easter egg hunt or the Fourth of July parade or Christmas parade, even though those things were outside, the fishing derby, everything got scrapped. And, and I think that that was like a big punch in the guts to, to Wellington. So so I definitely um, think that the, that that is our community strength is what we do through the community activities. And so my, my main problem with the, the strategic plan is that it's so vague. Even the goals are vague. I mean, it's not like we need to increase, we need five new businesses by the end of the year. Or um, we're going to uh, reduce or increase a workforce that, the town administration by a certain amount. Or uh, we will try to get an email address for every house in Wellington to improve communication. Um, you know, thi- things like that. Those are goals and then the plans are how you're going to reach the goal. I mean, if the goal is to fix the drainage problems on Cleveland, the plan's going to be to confer with C dot and Public Works on the, what's needed and a timeline. And if we can't get C dot, part of the plan ought to be, we should sue C dot if the timeline's unreasonable. I've been here for seven years and every year we get a big rainstorm and, and the auction gets flooded. It's, you know, it's, it's really, um, you know, it's something, but that's specific and this is all almost gobbledygook. You know, I'm glad John brought up the enhance and explore partnerships, because like, what in the world is that? And uh, and the other thing about reviewing employee compensation, I would just like to remind the town staff that you guys have gotten a paycheck for the past ten months, when a lot of people have not. And I just think it would be kind of tone deaf to ask for raises this year. And also I had no idea what on and off boarding meant under the, you know, the personnel stuff. So if somebody could tell me what that is, I'd appreciate it. I'm almost out of time, so. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mayor Hammond, we have Jenna and Mike Clark.
Okay.
Yes, uh, so I just wanted to uh, back up Christine Gator with what she said. And I'm going to just be super straightforward and super blunt here. A lot of the terminology that I see being used is straight out of the Communist Manifesto. Uh, that is unacceptable to me as an American. I have read that book. I understand it. I know what it's all about and uh, and I do not accept it. So I think it's a good idea uh, to sit down with some people and go over some of that terminology. And like Christine said, it's not semantics. Uh, things sound similar, but mean very different things. Um, and uh, there, there's just not enough time to address that at this moment. Uh, but I did want to put that seed in your heads so that you understand it. Uh, on top of that, uh, I'll, I'll go along with Mrs. Wydell again, and uh, I think what she was saying was really fantastic and we need to make sure that things are uh, goals that we have are measurable, uh, attainable and uh, and, and tangible, you know. Um, a lot of the terminology is very vague and sort of nebulous about what it actually means and what actually takes place when we adopt that stuff. So uh, that's my two cents. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Yes, we have Sherelle that would like to speak again.
Okay.
I apologize. I should have stated that I was not done asking my questions when I started asking. Um, I agree again with both of what the other community members have stepped up and talked about. When I was looking through, I had a hard time understanding with the strategic plan. There was not a lot of detail on goals, date set to accomplish said goals. I didn't understand if this was, yes, you're just voting to approve uh, the picture that you guys sent. What's the strategic and or everything entailed and the planning that comes into it down the road. So when you're voting on this, are we voting to approve the strategic plan as is? Or is this just approving it how it looks in PowerPoint? My other thing that I wanted to also add is, are you guys bringing in the community? When it comes to offering valuable opinions and say on what they what their vision and goal is for the strategic plan, community members, people that live here. Okay, those are my questions.
Thank you, Sherelle. Other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, we have no other public comment at this time.
We're going to bring it back to the board at this point. Uh, you know, I, I want to try to, as a board here make some sense out of what we're trying to do here to the people that asked some very good questions. Uh, and, and Sherelle was right, this, this is a bit of a high level PowerPoint presentation. And we all sat in with professional staff a, a, and people to help develop these higher level things. And as you go through to refine these goals, they're going to be detailed and they will be presented for public engagement and even for public direction. That's my understanding. This is just a template of a high level uh, categories that need to be worked on. There's going to be, there's a lot of information behind each one of these. Now, I'm looking for input from the board and also our staff as to uh, how do we articulate exactly what we're doing here?
I'd like to. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, um, the intention of this and, and then the process that we did, from my perspective, of course, was to create guiding documentation as to the direction towards the vision that we realized as a group and created. Um, everybody, of course, came to the, the session, the strategic planning with their input from community members and honestly, with the purpose and direction of why we're running and, and working to serve the town. So with the idea of a guiding document, um, like the strategic plan, what it allows us to do, and again, from my perspective, the staff is going to be able to be able to input, have better input on this. But was, is to be able to put items that are our priority within certain categories that meet our vision in order for that execution to happen. If not, between the activities of running a town and doing improvements, we may not ever realize a final goal because we didn't have a category or goals that rolled into those areas of interest. So when um, someone might read it and they would think that seems kind of vague, the idea is that that category or the area of interest that we determined will then, that's the top level and that cascades down into many different specific goals and actions that then have to be done by so many different groups within the staff. So whether it's different teams or whatever outreach might be involved. So that's the intent of the strategic plan from my perspective, just to give that out there. Um, to make sure that we're all aligned for one and what we want to happen um, from the board's perspective um, based on the needs that we see in the community. Now, each one of those things that it cascades down to, each one of those will likely have to have some kind of community outreach. So we can't say at the top level and say, what does community think? It has to go all the way down to those pieces that are funneling into the strategic, strategic plan and get that input at each one of those levels as well. So I don't want to say that we're disregarding it, but I want to make sure that we're looking at this plan as intended with the purpose of how it's going to drive Wellington.
Kelly, do you want to expound on that?
Um, I think trustee Kenny captured it rather well. This is a guiding document. Um, quarterly, you'll see updates on these. The, what we didn't want to happen, since there's so much that still does need community engagement and board input, um, if we were to include the entire um, Excel spreadsheet that we've been working on, it's things that have not been formally adopted by the board yet, and we still do need engagement and conversation with. Um, and so that was the intention to keep it focused on the, the key areas of focus and the goals. Um, so we can come back through budget process, through um, consultants that may need to be gauged. It, it all just depends on what that item is to accomplish. It it all just depends on what that item is to accomplish that goal. So you're going to see this throughout the next two years of a lot of different engagement. But didn't felt to feel it was appropriate to adopt um the each line item on those because that hasn't had, you know, had discussion yet and needs to be fully vetted out.
Other board members want to. Way in on what we're trying to do here and what we're calculating?
So I did want to chime in first, I did want to thank members of the community for sharing your concerns. This does actually come back to highlight my comment earlier is the concern and I uh. I personally do not have a problem with the plan because I was there with the mayor and the other trustees for the, what, 16, 20 hours? So I don't remember how long we were there, um, that we were sitting there that went into the background for each of these items. So I understand the conversations, the things that we're looking at that drive that. But one of the points that was made earlier was that, yes, while I have had conversations with members of the community to understand, okay, I'm looking for this, I'm looking for this. There was never a conversation where I sat down with a member of the community and said, hey, by the way, I'm going to be going out for two days, sitting down with the board to prepare the background of this strategic plan that we're going to focus on for 2021. What do you think needs to be in there? And so to some extent, I think there was a piece missing there where that engagement from the public, the other thing that concerns me is that to, and again, to hear that there was concerns that some of the things in here reminding members of our community of the Communist Manifesto, which when I was sitting in that meeting, I know that is not what we're trying to do. That tells me that even if it's just the wording that we use, that's a major mess. And so I think that, again, it, rather than bringing the community in at the last moment when we're approving a document, I understand that we have to figure out a way to do this, but I think that, again, just highlights it. To me, that's a major mess because those are not. From sitting in that meeting over those two days, that is not a comment that I would expect to hear coming out of a document that came out of that meeting because that was definitely not what we were going for. And I think that that's something. We need to find a, we find, we need to find a solution to that because it tells me that we're missing some pretty major things in terms of community engagement in preparing this document. Yes, we're the board, yes, we set that vision, but that vision is supposed to come from members of the community.
Any members, other other comments? So they were, the public comments that we received tonight were, some were profound, for sure. I mean. This document. Leaves a lot of people scratching their head on the surface. They don't really understand exactly what we're doing with backup to all this. I mean, you, do we think it's ready to roll out? Is it not ready to roll out? We want to hold on to this for a little bit, maybe refine it?
I think it's ready, I think um it's ready with those major areas of focus. Again, all those, all those pieces within that, all those individual tasks and goals are going to come back through here and they're going to be.
They are, but but people don't understand that right now.
I'm, I understand that, um, but I also understand that we have things like water concerns, you know, those are primarily. And those are things that we drive in our meetings intentionally. The nice thing about having a document like that is that we can formalize that. So these are the major top issues, this doesn't mean that we don't hear other things, that doesn't mean that we don't consider anything else. It just gives us a document to essentially help our staff have focus on on additional projects. This does not mean that we would not do anything outside of this this document, that it is not the case whatsoever.
Well, for instance. Sustainable infrastructure. When you look at plan and develop purposeful facilities. I can give you two of them that we've been talking about over three years now, and that's two water treatment plants. Those are purposeful utilities and facilities that we that we're talking about. Plan and develop to help that that help this town, water quality. So there's a lot of things that go behind that, and I think that's what. Our 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 public doesn't seem to really grasp because that information isn't there for them tonight, right now. So.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
I I think that from my understanding, the board has a pretty clear understanding of what we're trying to accomplish accomplish with this document. I think town staff also has a pretty good idea. But I think we need to keep in mind, we are not the only two entities, right? The most important entity in this town is the citizens of the town that all of the rest of us serve. What my recommendation would be is if maybe we ask if members of this that community that have concerns about wording can reach out to town staff. Share with them some specific examples of, hey, this is the concern that I have, can we maybe work some different ways to address this? And then we can maybe fix, because again, I think most of it is just going to be maybe how things are worded can make it slightly more clear. I'm not saying every single thing we're going to do for the next 10 years needs to be spelled out. But maybe we work, because again, our staff understands the focus that we want, the board understands that. Why not take the time to see if we can make some adjustments so that it actually fits better? So members of the community can also be on board and understand what we're trying to accomplish. Because to me, it does no good to have a document that I understand, town staff understands, and our community has no clue what's going on.
Thoughts on that? I'm not opposed to getting some more input. Those were pretty good questions. We spent a lot of time into it. Um, I haven't heard from trustee Whitehouse or trustee Jerome yet. Do you have anything to add? Constructive on this would be helpful.
Uh, sure, I mean, it does seem a little esoteric at this point, and it certainly a lot of effort went on to get to this point, I mean, certainly we could probably communicate better if we get some feedback. The thing is, I think trustee Kenny summed it up pretty well that if, you know, you need to have some sort of plan or you don't get anything done. And this is a living document, this is not chiseled in stone, and it's a set of sort of guiding principles to get to a specific direction. Now, does that change over time? Yeah, it absolutely positively can, I mean, it's not, it's not a one, yeah. So, I mean, I'm good with it now, now can we roll it out and do better communication with it and explain some of this stuff? Yeah, I think we can do that, I think that's absolutely possible.
Trustee Jerome?
Yeah, I I mean, my understanding of this document and what we're actually looking at right now is probably the absolute highest overview of what we're trying, going to try to get accomplished over the next couple of years. That we could possibly do, I mean, we're not getting into the weeds with any one item. We're just trying to. Have a document to keep us on a roadmap and to kind of keep us and staff on task. You know, each of these items, obviously, there's a lot to that goes into them and and a lot deeper. Information has to be um rooted out and also obviously public engagements. You know, all kinds of stuff has to go along with all the subsections, but. You know, it, that's the way I look at, I don't look at this as is, this is exactly what's going to be done. This is a general overview of what we're trying to get accomplished, and as you know, trustee Whitehouse said, and we we've heard this the last time, um, we went through and did a strategic plan is it's a it's a living, breathing document that has to be adjusted according to um, obviously. A pandemic, um, a natural disaster, uh, you know, there's all kinds of reasons why this document would have to be adjusted in one way, shape or form to um go with the times, so. I understand the public's um questions, concerns, um, but. This is such, at such a high level, it's not being very specific about anything because there's so many specifics to each of the different items that, I mean, we'd be. Looking at a. A thousand page document, you know, if we tried to go through each item. Individually at this point, but those come as we go and move into the the projects and try to get those things accomplished, so. I'm okay with with this document as it sits as just a, as a strictly as a guide. It's not detail oriented, and I don't believe it's meant to be detail oriented, it's just a guide, and then as we move into trying to accomplish those items, then the details come out and you know, we work from those, so that's my comment on that.
Any other staff questions or how does the staff feel about it? Kelly, what do you think? I mean.
If the board's comfortable moving forward, adopting um again, the high level roadmap for the strategic plan. I think staff, we can do a better job communicating what these mean. So I I would envision this doing it um quarterly updates to the board and so giving you the real breakdown of each action step. And we'll have more touch points um at that point in time of, is this the correct direction um hearing from the public? So I think that might be the best plan of action if we can adopt the high level updates tonight. And then we'll get lots more public input um as we move through the document.
I I I think, I think you hit that one right on the nail there, okay? These are the high level goals, like for instance. Under community engagement, improve access to local government, that's a given right there, you know, there's, and then you know, when we talk, how are you going to, how are we going to do that? And uh that'll be down the road and and then and then some way of measuring this kind of thing that hasn't been established yet either. And those things haven't been established, this is just. The uh high level roadmap with goals. So I think, I think that's the the point and purpose of this document. And uh with the mindset of every quarter. Refining, updating and backing up what each one of these goals is means and uh what it takes to get there. I mean, that's what I, that's how I read, that's what I, that's what I take this document to mean.
Can I ask a question of town staff mayor?
Yes.
So if we were to delay approving this document until our first meeting in January, which would be three weeks, would that bring staff to a standstill in working towards these priorities to where you would not be able to do your jobs because we haven't approved this document? If we were to take those three weeks for staff to have a chance to just talk with some of these members of the community to bring that into the into the discussion?
Um, I think these are uh three pretty difficult weeks for community engagement with the holidays. So I don't know if that, if that's the intention, it would be, I'll just be honest, I think it would be a little bit difficult to try to engage people between now and the new year. Will we continue to work on um high level goals that the board has set out, of course, um, I think that's the intention, but. If Patty Garcia has additional feedback, um, I think we'll turn it over to her.
Sure, so in my head, I was thinking same as Kelly, I mean, we've got three weeks um before our next meeting and it is a very difficult time. The second part I was thinking about is, you know, we could receive information from the public, but what are we going to? How how are we going to get that to you to review? I mean, are we going to, my thought process is, okay, so we take in all these extra comments and then how do we get it to you? Do we, you know, how do we make, get the information so we, you all can decide on how to move forward um with these changes? I felt like um when we had talked about this before, this had been vetted through our board of trustees and they were, and you all were comfortable with where we were. We've had um some citizens call in tonight, which is normal. You know, and generally in a strategic planning exercise, it is, you bring in the whole community, you rent the community center and you have round tables and you have pages up everywhere and people put up stickers and notes and things about what they, what they truly desire. I think in the world of COVID, this, you guys have done an amazing job with this. Um, and I feel like, you know, this is an important document, it will be revisited in two years. I mean, my, what I've done in the past is, this is something that's looked at and recreated and talked about when a new town board or a board of trustees gets voted in, so April of 2022. This is going to come back and we're going to start looking and chomping through it again and come up with, you know, revisions and things like that. The language is a little rough sometimes, I think, you know, it's very government. It is, it is, this is how we speak and this is how we work in government. Um, and I think that as Kelly said, we can, we can get out some information to better explain what each of these goals means. One of them was enhance and explore partnerships. Well, if you, if you drill that down too small, that limits us to what we can do. So to enhance and explore partnerships means, you know, we can work with C dot, we can work with the Kiwanis Club, we can work with the high school in the school district, so, I mean, partnerships, that should be a word that, I mean, we should understand. So I don't know, I'm, I'm at a loss, I'm hoping that this can get adopted tonight and we can move forward and we can do our part as far as educating the public as to what each of the goals means. Um, but of course, that's up to the purview of the count, of the board of trustees.
Well, it seems like that would be something we would want to do. Is probably approve this so that they can get, these are kind of like, you know, their plan to move forward with and then staff can, with our help. Better explain what these are.
Yes, absolutely.
Any further comment?
One question, uh, pardon, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is, aren't we going to be looking at progress in all these areas quarterly? Is that, that's my.
Correct, along with the projects that were, that are being worked on, so you'll be getting a quarterly report. Hallie's going to work on that and it will, it will show what's been worked on, you know, what areas it falls under, progress. I'm hoping to link it into our um memos that um that we do for um the town board packets or the board of trustee packets. Saying, you know, well, this relates to this, you know, goal and, you know, this intentional growth and development and goal one, you know, type thing. So that there's, it feeds each other so that there's accountability on staff's side that we are working towards the goals that the board of trustees has put forward. And we are doing our job to to continue to keep you in the loop as far as how we're moving forward on those goals.
So can I get a clarification? Because I keep hearing from people that we're going to be addressing this quarterly, so are we saying that the document that we're approving right now? Not talking about updates, but we'll actually, if we are getting feedback from the board or the public that we will actually change this document, not the goal sheet, not the Excel spreadsheet. But my understanding is that if we approve this, this document stays until the next board puts a new one in place, is that correct?
Correct, so what I'm talking about updating quarterly, it is the projects and things we're working on, that the second part of the strategic plan, the base sheet.
Okay, so that's the concern I have, and thank you, Ms. Garcia, because there's two points you made, is one, normally there's town halls, things like that where the community has been involved, there has been no community involvement to this point. It was done completely in the um board retreat and then it has all happened in work sessions. So this is the first opportunity we have had for any public input into this plan at all whatsoever. And so that to me is where I would be, and I understand we're hanging three weeks of holidays, but honestly, if these citizens are that concerned, they'll make time to let us know what their concerns are. And so I would rather see us take the two weeks because, again, to me, unless it literally means town hall will be, nothing will be happening. Our employees will be sitting at desks with no jobs to do unless we approve this tonight, which I don't think is the fact. I would rather see us take three weeks. If members of the community really care about this, they'll bring those to the attention of town staff. And yes, maybe it's more work for us as the board of trustees, but our job is to represent the citizens. And if this is what our citizens are asking us to do, if it means it's more work for me. That's what I ran for office for, so rather than just saying, I'm going to do it what's easier for me and ignore what you, my bosses have asked me to do. I think we take the three weeks, if they give us input, great, if they don't give us input, then we've already got a document to go with.
Well, trustee trustee Gator, I think the issue is not, the timeframe is, we're wrapping up the financials. It's town staff that is almost underwater here, I don't think it's a. I mean, I don't know everything that has to happen, but there's a lot of stuff that we got to wrap up just to get to this point. I don't believe that it's, I think the issue is a throughput and bandwidth issue with town staff to address this at this point. Now, maybe if we want to talk about doing something in the coming quarter, maybe appropriate, but um. Yeah, I mean, I do think we should move ahead because this is a 30,000 foot view. And I do think that we need to uh get this, uh, I would, I would suggest passing it, that would be my my perspective.
Any final comments? I'm 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 comfortable with passing this, understanding in the next, in the next quarter, trustee Gator, that we're going to go out and get public engagement for all the backup that goes to it. And if there's some wording that needs to be changed, well, it can be changed. There's no reason why it can't be changed in the next quarter. I don't know why.
I just was told it's not going to change, mayor, we were just told that this document's not going to change, the backup will change. This document's not changing till the next board comes in.
Oh, I don't know that, this board can make changes if it wants to, can it?
Sure, absolutely, you can do whatever you want, you know, and I, let me ask you a question, did Cheryl Trent help with this document at all, or was this, okay? So I, so, and I don't know if this will. So I, so and I don't know if this will help, but I'm thinking if if we want to stop and take time to receive some of those public comments. I have, I have talked to Cheryl and she is planning to do another four hour time with the Board of Trustees sometime in January, based on everybody's calendars. And maybe that's a time we can bring some of those comments back and integrate them or take a look at them compared to what we have here. Just throwing that out.
To refine it a little, maybe more, you know?
I, I, I am willing to pass this if the board will commit that it is going to come back to this and revisit this with community input. But if we are not willing to commit, that we will 100% revisit this within, say, the next couple of months to get that community input. And we will change the document if needed. I will not vote to approve this because we heard pretty loud and clear that community members want us to actually take their input into consideration.
This, yeah, this is our plan. This is the plan that the trustees came together after we did two days with the technical presentations on the state of our town. So if it's our plan, we can change it. I mean, strategic plan, we're the ones who put this together. So just for everybody who's on the public who's here, this is not something staff brought to us and said, please approve this. This was developed with wording, the areas of interest from this group of trustees. So we all brought those together in a working session, legit drawing on sticky notes and putting it together and understanding where the concerns that we hear from the community, people I talk to every day, were telling us what to address with technical knowledge that took us two days of presentations. So as we engage the community more and of course, matching that with the, you know, the technical information that we receive, I'm absolutely happy to revisit it. But to say that all that work that we did had no meaning, I can't say that either. Sorry, I really want to move forward. And of course, as always, for everything, as indicated in the strategic plan, improve engagement with community. And that's why that's in there. That's exactly the reason that we had to put it in there.
Absolutely.
There's, I'm sorry, trustee Kenny, did I cut you off? So I do want to say that it was not just the Board of Trustees. We had a moderator. We also had, town staff had a lot of input in to this creation of this document and they had some great comments. This is, again, you know, we are all earnest volunteers who sit as trustees. We have professional accredited experienced staff who does help guide us. Because I can't speak for anyone else, but sometimes I need some guidance. So this did not come out of a vacuum. It came out of pretty much the Board of Trustees working directly and closely with the other people here in town. So I do want to have that recognized.
I have, I have no problem passing this tonight. I know there's a lot of backup to every one of these issues here, what goes into that. I have no problem revisiting this every quarter to refine it, change it, make it look like what the town wants. Hey, I'm not married to anything here. But this is, this is our high level goals that we identified that need work. That's all they are. How we get there is another story. That's where we, that's where the refinement comes in. So that's where I'm at with it. So I've had no problem doing that tonight with the idea that we got another quarter coming up. And we're going to revisit those comments and the backup for this stuff to further refine this and then do it again and keep doing it. That's what this is all about. This is just, this is just unrolling. I mean, the mission statement, the vision statement might even get changed, but we got to start with something. So, so.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call the question.
Yes. Okay, let's go ahead and entertain motion to approve the resolution 49 dash 2020, resolution adopting the strategic plan.
So moved.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. And I do appreciate public's comments tonight. They did not go unheard. We are going to come back. All right, let's move on item five. Mar-a-Lago ordinance, this is going to be a staff presentation from our town attorney, Brad March.
Mr. Mayor, you've got my report in the packet. I'm not sure what's wrong with my camera tonight, but it doesn't seem to be working. I apologize. The, by way of update to the what I, what I provided you in the packet, the, we received correspondence from the proponents of the ordinance on Monday. I forwarded that on to Patty. We've got, they they've made some suggestions about a possibility of a, of an ordinance that would perhaps settle this. I've got some issues. I haven't had a lot of time to go through the whole thing. My suggestion would be, the purpose of the, this being on the agenda tonight was to provide the board with an overview. My suggestion would be is that we bring this back to the board on the meeting on the 12th. And I've already suggested to the proponents attorney that we'd like to sit down and meet with them. I'm pretty well through going through their suggested changes. As I say, I've got some concerns. I think some of those things are just oversights that perhaps both of us had. And I think working together with it, we can come up with a better product. So what I'd like to do, with that said, I have any questions about my report? Hello? Maybe it's feedback, I'm sorry. Okay, what, what, what I'd like to do is bring it back on the 12th. And we'll tell you where we are as far as meeting with the proponents and their counsel. If there are any questions about my report, I'm happy to fill in any, any blanks.
Any questions for Brad? Okay, I think the issue is still dead in the water, right, Brad? That's where we're at. Nothing's happening. Is that what you're saying?
We are, but we're, we're, well, we're actually, we're making progress. We, when I wrote my report, we had not yet heard back from proponents and that their counsel was not hearing from them. We've now gotten responses.
Okay. All right. So if there's no comments, comments from the board, then we're just going to table this till we get some more information that's worthy of talking about to the 12th. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
Will it need to be an executive session on the 12th?
Well, without knowing what we get, well, if it needs to be, we'll schedule it as such. It may well need to be.
Okay.
I'm glad we heard back from him. Greatness.
Yeah. Me too.
Okay. Well, then we won't pursue it anymore tonight. Can I get a motion to post, table this marijuana ordinance to the January 12th board meeting?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. All right, last, last action item, number six, in-person Board Trustees meeting. This was brought to us from a request from trustee Jerome and trustee Gator. Turn it over to you guys.
Yeah, I just think it's time that this board starts meeting in person. Try to get back to a little bit of normalcy. So I bring it, I just bring it to the board members. I think that starting in January, we all as a group should meet in our chambers as a normal meeting with the public invited to attend. We're all adults. The, the public are adults. They can make a decision if they, if they want to come to a meeting in person, they can do that. If they still do not feel comfortable going in public or being near other people. I believe that there's been some headway made with audio visual technologies for our board member or for our boardroom to help facilitate getting our, our meetings transmitted over the internet. Or I'm not sure what, where that's at. But I just think it's time that the town of Wellington Board of Trustees start meeting in person, person and kind of lead by example with, by getting back to normalcy, so.
Trustee Gator?
Yes, so I am in agreement with trustee Jerome. I know part of the, there was multiple things that led to us meeting online fully. But part of the reason behind that was we tried to do a hybrid meeting. And unfortunately, at the time, our technology would not support that. I do understand that we have a lot of those issues addressed so that we can now continue to do a hybrid meeting. I have had three different citizens over the last week that have come to me with major concerns with specifically dealing with the water rates that they do not feel comfortable with Zoom and doing online meetings. And therefore, they were very upset that in essence, their voice was not heard by the board. Because the only option they had to attend a meeting was to do so over technology that they did not feel comfortable, comfortable, excuse me, or capable of using. And so I think that we were at a point where technology, we can afford people to be able to be either present or virtual. But I do think it's time for us to go back. It is incredibly important that the citizens of our town have access to these public meetings, whether they're able to access technology or not. So I think that it is time for us to go back to meeting in person.
Any comments from our board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I mean, based on the current status, I mean, and the social distancing, I'm looking at the, we have like 20 town staff here. Can we even accommodate all those people with appropriate social distancing? And then let alone the public? I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I have to say, this idea seems ludicrous. I just don't think this is a safe idea. I mean, I, I don't know if you have any public health guidance that somehow supports the idea that meeting in public, I mean, we've thankfully, our town staff has not been taken out by some sort of outbreak. I mean, we are spread so thin here that this just, this, I don't get it. I mean, we've seen a spike in cases after Thanksgiving. I guarantee you, we're going to see an increased spike in January. And I think even the state legislators, legislature is off for like a month in January, February. For me, it just doesn't make sense to do this. And I can tell you personally, I'm not going to be there. I haven't done a really anything inside in since February. And this is just, I, I like, I'm not supportive of this in any shape or form. And I think it's putting our staff, which are critical for both the operations of our town just day to day, plus the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant and the Pooter School District coming online. I don't know. I think that, I mean, we are far more expendable than they are as far as I'm concerned. Yeah.
Trustee Kenny?
I see no reason to accept additional risk when not required. I think that we've been doing a good job with online meetings. I, I personally have been out and about. So I've been, I'm fine with that, but I'm not comfortable with making that decision for other people. And the other thing is, we've had more input on these online meetings than before. Much more consistent input from the community. Can we do a better job of capturing input from folks who can't attend? I think we could do a better job there. Maybe we should focus our efforts on some kind of input for comments, questions that will be formally be acknowledged during meetings. I mean, we receive emails sometimes and we respond, but were they intended to be emailed to us so that they would be included as public comment during a meeting? That's a different question. So maybe we could focus more on those to make sure everybody's accommodated and heard. And I think the recordings of the meetings that have been out, I've gotten a lot of feedback on that, that that's pretty cool and how that's working. And even though I think we ideally have better technology now to make those meetings work better, I don't think we're there yet. So definitely in January would not be the choice of let's learn how to put all this together, make it work, make it be live. Because before we had a slight delay and missed public comment based on the actual procedure of our meetings. So that's once, what's one thing to say that we have it, but are how we practice and we're ready and we are going to be a professional organization on in a meeting with online input is another thing. When half of that input could come from our own staff. So let's, I, I, let's practice, though. Let's get all those skills and all that tech up to where it needs to be. But I will not be attending in-person meetings. So.
Okay. Patty, would you like to speak on behalf of the staff?
Sure. So because the majority of us have been working, the majority of the people have been working remotely. You know, it would be definitely a change, you know, but if it was a hybrid opportunity for them, I mean, sharing screens and things like that. I mean, we did that in Loveland. In Loveland, I also took email comments up until like 10 minutes before a meeting. And that was, I mean, we had a lot of people just sending email comments to me directly, which we read during public comment with, and I felt like that got, that we were able to touch the people that maybe didn't feel comfortable with Zoom. They at least, you know, could send an email or even a letter. We got a couple of hard copies of letters dropped off at City Hall so we could go on ahead and provide those public comments. This is the wishes of, you know, the Board of Trustees. We did reach out to other municipalities today to see what others were doing. And the majority are still meeting virtually with no public comment in our surrounding areas. So, you know, it's truly up to you all and how you want to handle it. I did not check over in Weld County. I did not check, I did not, except for Windsor. Windsor is virtual or hybrid with no public, public comments, so.
So they're a hybrid.
In-person public, sorry.
What, they're a hybrid with no, no in-person public?
Correct. Correct. And we did it like that in Loveland for a while until they decided to go completely virtual. So like, and there are a few municipalities that are doing that hybrid with no public, no public, no in-person public. But I felt like trustee Jerome and Gators' goal was to allow for the public to be there.
I don't, my, my, my personal opinion is we're a little, we're a little too soon. I want to get back to public meetings. I want to get back to in-person meetings as well. I really do. But I just feel like we're a little too soon yet. I'd like to get past January, you know, if we could do well and, and, and our numbers come down, we could, we could turn our, get our town from red, out of the red zone here and get back to where we can open up restaurants even. There's no need to try to take a risk to, to add to any numbers, voluntarily take a risk like that. I don't, I don't, I don't, I think we're being effective. I know we can be better. And I, I, we are taking public comment as opposed to other towns. That's pretty good. So I'm, 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 I don't want to put any staff members at risk either. With every, we're, we're, we're shorthanded in a lot of places. We need everyone. And I don't think it's, the timing's not there. Though I do agree with our trustees that want to get this going, it can, I do, I do sympathize with it, empathize with it. It's time. We've been doing this for a long time. I just feel it's a little soon yet. I'd like to get down the road just a little bit further here. And then, and then go ahead and, and pull the trigger on it. So I, I'm inclined to, 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 to say no for now at this point. Not that, not, only for those reasons at this point. That's what I have to say on it.
I, I completely respect everybody's, everybody's point of view. And I just was throwing it out there. My feeling is, I think we need to get back into, you know, live in-person meetings. Obviously, if it goes to a vote right now, that's probably not going to happen. But I would like to point out that if we are not going back into public meetings, we're going to continue doing Zoom meetings that we need to shut off the chat box because this is a public meeting and everything has to be for public consumption. So either we shut the chat box off, so there's not side, side chats, or we need to go through and read every chat that has been put into the chat box to get that into the public record. So and that's something that's really bothered me for a while, that we have all this side chatter over here that if we were in a public meeting, wouldn't be happening because either you'd be at the podium as a public member, addressing the board or vice versa. So going forward, I think that we need to, at least if the chat box doesn't get shut off, then it needs to be read aloud at some point during the meeting to get that into the public record. um at some point during the meeting to get that into the public record. And I think that would be a matter of procedure.
I understand that. If you were chatting, right?
Information, so.
Yeah, if you were chatting in the boardroom, we, we'd shut it down.
Yep, so.
I got, I get that. I don't have a gap.
Yeah, uh, I can appreciate the concerns for other people, and I think that that's why we have the opportunity to do the hybrid where people can still submit comment in person or, or live. And if there are concerns with town staff, there's not a problem with having them continue to call in. We have the screens. We have the technology to be able to engage with town staff just the same way that we do over Zoom. So to me, it's not that it cannot work. And I can understand that there are concerns about public gatherings, but I will note that with all of the concerns that our county still has no problems with dozens and hundreds of people being in Walmarts or King Supers. So I'm not I have a hard time with a high concern that those areas are not a source of concern, but us having, you know, twenty people in the building for a board meeting to accommodate those that would like to be in person is a concern. I have, I have issue with that. If it really is that bad, then we should have no places open, which we do. So I do take some issue with those, with those comments.
To that point, trustee Gator, to that point, to that point, trustee Gator, I was thinking about that. That's something that, that's uh on a lot of people's minds is how you can have all these other places open that they got open, but yet churches aren't open, restaurants aren't open, that sort of thing. And, and then all of a sudden you open up the boardroom. I, 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 I don't have control over what the county does or anything like that, but uh there's a lot of, a lot of places that I still can't get together. So uh, I just, I, my personal opinion, it's just a little soon yet. Trustee Kenny, you had something to add?
Just the point was that, you know, from our board in our town, we're not determining that those stores are open and others aren't. So
Right, right.
Make that clear that that's, that's not, that's not us, obviously.
Right. Okay. Well, if there's no other comments, let's open up to the public.
Mayor, I have Jenna and Mike Clark.
Sure.
Hey, thank you again. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, I think this was a great session. Um, I, I don't think we should be moving forward with that strategic plan. Uh, there is no emergency.
We're on item six, sir. We're talking about meeting and, meeting in person. We gotta stick to the topic.
Okay, I just, I had raised my hand uh far before that, and I just wanted to say that. Um, but as meeting in person goes, I take the same stance as I do with the re, the restaurants. Uh, if you do not feel comfortable meeting in person, then feel free to join on Zoom. If you do feel comfortable meeting in person, then do so. And uh, we are all adults here. We're all grown. We are all able to make the choice for ourselves and for our families. And uh, I am one hundred percent behind meeting in person, and that doesn't mean that I would as an individual. I might tune in on Zoom. It's convenient. It's really great. Um, but I also might like to attend in person. And uh, so again, I tend to uh to go with personal responsibility and uh whatever you as an individual chooses is the right answer. So if we can have both options, I think we should have both options. I thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor, we have Christine Gator.
Okay.
Hello, let's see. So according to the code, section two dash two dash eighty-five A four, it states at least one member for the Board of Trustees or Board or Commission or an officer appointed by the Board or Commission is present at the physical meeting location, unless the nature of the meeting makes attendance impractical or inadvisable as determined by the mayor or pro, may pro temp, in which case notice of such shall be given with the statutorily required meeting notice, end quote. Well, um, I don't believe that this notice has been given on each meeting notice, nor do I think that the emergency makes attendance impractical, such as the leaper center being underwater or being flooded. So um, one, you guys are not following your own code, and two, even if you do vote no, um trustee Gator and trustee Jerome can be one of those board members that opens the leaper center so that any uh member that wants to come in public can. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor Hammond, we have Sherelle that would like to speak.
Okay, let's hear it.
Hello, Sherelle Teats. Do I have to give my address again?
Yes, please.
Four, five, two.
Oh.
Hello?
Yes.
Four, five, two, five Ingalls Drive. I am in support of the hybrid for the town meetings. It would be awesome to be able to be there in person, but also have the option that if I don't have care for my kids, I am able to stay home and still view everything that's going on in our community. I do again, yes, still support the fact that if you're not willing or comfortable to go out and about, please feel free to stay home. But I think that the, the idea behind community and gathering is people feeling present and in the moment to be able to feel like they're a part of something bigger. When we're stuck at home and doing these meetings as, you know, virtual only, I think a lot of people may not feel as engaged as what they would if they are in the more meeting with a board packet, being able to safely distance, but feeling like they're actually there in a part of something. Um, I know I've seen a lot of community members out and about at the coffee shop and grocery stores and stuff like that, even here in town. I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and I actually look forward to be, being able to attend in person. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, yes, mayor, we have an individual with their hand raised with just the letter E. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Erin Jerome. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just kind of wanted to reach out to you guys. Um, just as board members, you guys kind of lead by example. And I do know, you know, that it, there have been several community members that are out engaging in community events such as, you know, restaurants and breweries and things like that. So I think that it is really important that you guys get back to in-person because if those things are acceptable to be out and about doing those, I think it's really important that you guys engage the community in person as well as far as, you know, board meetings go to.
Thank you, Erin. Anyone else?
We have Kathy White Dallas.
Okay.
Hi, Kathy White Dallas, three, four, oh, five Riviera Court. And I'm, I'm for opening the, um, I'm for opening everything. So indefinitely for opening up the, um, having public meetings again. But I, I do like the, I do hope you have the uh ability to have the hybrid, either people who are either the trustees that are there being on Zoom, the ones who are uncomfortable going, you know, being able to uh participate by Zoom also, and then it's, it would be great if there was video that um people who couldn't make it or were sick at the time or something and wanted to uh, they wanted to attend anyway, could um you know, could do it that way. So I'm for opening it up, but um especially as long as there's a another technological way to, to, for people who cannot attend. Another thing is that if you guys don't pass it today, I would like you to bring it up again in January to see if we can open up in February. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else?
Yes, mayor, we have Amanda McGwin.
Okay.
Yes, this is Amanda McGwin from eight, nine, seven, nine Raging Bull Lane. And I want to say piggyback on what everybody else has said. I am for in-person meetings. Um, I feel the community is reaching out to you and especially trustee Gator has said people have reached out to him saying that they can't do virtual meetings. Um, if you guys really are here to serve the public, and as you've stated in your plan that you just passed, you really want more community involvement, you need to open it up to the public. So those who can't attend on this forum can attend in public and have their voices heard and more community engagement. I think the hybrid is a great idea, and I don't see any problem with it going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Let's bring it back to the board. Any final comment?
Just however we do vote on this, I think the community has spoken their piece, but regardless of what we do, we do need to address that we are not following the code currently. Um, because we have not had anyone onsite at the physical meeting location, which is actually spelled out in the conditions that are required for us to follow our own, to, to hold virtual meetings. So either we need to follow that provision or we need to go back to full in-person meetings, one of the two.
Brad, what do you think about that?
Let, let me look at that code provision. I think we looked at it when we made the decision to go to full um, the meetings that were um, fully Zoom, if you will. But let me take a look at it again, and I'll give you guys an opinion. If we need to do it, we'll do it.
Any other?
I like the idea of not just killing this or going with it, whatever the case might be, but readdressing it.
Oh, sure, sure.
We would be in favor of tabling this perhaps till the end of January, where we might know more information after the holidays and get some feedback maybe from staff of their comfort level of both running the meeting as well as attending meetings. Um, I think, I think that's what I would be in favor of doing too, cause and then also other public comment was the comfort of going out and being public. I'm comfortable doing that, but again, I don't want to make that decision for anybody else. And if the staff has to help or to run the meeting in person, that's required. And I'm not comfortable making that decision for other people. That's my concern, but I would definitely want to revisit it with more information, more feedback on the process.
Trustee Whitehouse, anything further? Did you, you said all you had to say? Okay.
That's it, I'd be quiet.
Okay, uh, all right, trustee Jerome. Okay, I, 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 I want to get back to in-person meetings. I'd just like to see our numbers come down. I am out in the public, and that's what I do. Uh, trying to support our businesses and do what I can, trying to do the social distancing and that sort of thing. I don't want anyone to to come to one of our board meetings and pick up the COVID virus and have a problem with it. Just because we went ahead and did that. I'd like to get a little further along. I would hate to be the one uh, uh, to, to, to bring that upon someone unnecessarily at this time. Uh, if we could get another month in this, we might see some numbers come down. We might see a little bit better prospect. And, and, and maybe it even, even for the hybrid or just a full on blown public, but I think we need a little bit further time, a little bit more time. And uh, I'm for tabling it. I'm from addressing it the next meeting. I'm for just all the way through, just like we're keeping the uh Maryland ordinance on its thing. Keep this on here as well till we get there, because I, I hear the public and I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but I think I'd just like to give a little more time. And uh, I do want to be respectful of others as well. So I, I think I'd rather err on the side of caution than, than go through with it. Cause I can, you know, like I said, I'm out in the public myself as best I can. So with that being said, I'm, I'm more inclined to wait just a little longer here. I know it's been a long time and uh we'll get back to the to the uh, the regular meetings as soon as possible. Um, there's not many other municipalities doing hybrids. They're doing what we're doing. And um, and there's a reason for it. So with that being said, I'm, I'm in favor of motioning to uh postpone this and bringing it back up then our next board meeting, bringing it back up to the next board meeting. Just keep bringing it back up till, we are missing two board members tonight, I might add. Would have liked to have heard from them tonight. We didn't get to hear from them. They might have, they might have other opinions. I would like to hear from them. And so that, with that, I'd like to at least wait till the next board meeting, maybe get some more input from them as well. So with that being said, do you want to, you want to you want a motion to postpone this, or do you want to just vote on it now, or do you want a motion to postpone this in the next board meeting? I don't think that uh, I don't, I don't think that we have the I don't know that we have the votes to pass it tonight from what I'm hearing. I'd like to bring it up at the next board meeting.
I move that we table the action item in-person Board of Trustees meetings to January twenty-second. Twenty, sorry.
Is that the next one or is it the twelve?
January twenty-sixth. Board meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Let's take a roll call.
Trustee Gator.
No, I'd like to see our next board meeting.
Trustee Jerome.
No.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
We have three yeses and two nos.
So uh, Mr. Mayor, point of information for the public that on an action item, the uh board gets discussed, it, it's getting, gets opened up to the public. Once that public comment period is closed, the public comment is closed on this discussion item. So I, I do see some other hands up there, but it's more of a
Public is done.
Information.
I think we're done with it. January twenty-second. Going to bring it back up. Hopefully we can put yeses and get the thing going again. That's my, that's my intention. That's what I'd like to see done. I think that gives us enough time to see what happens. Okay, get through these holidays. Let's see what happens to the numbers. People are going to be traveling. Let's see what happens here. And then the, the, between now and then, not a whole lot is going to change. And then we can hit this road running with a good, solid, you know, support. Get our other board members here too. It's what I, it's my feeling, okay? But I appreciate you guys bringing it up. Uh, trustee Gator, trustee Jerome, I'm in full, I'm, I'm, can't wait to get back to it. We're going to get there. And we will look into that ordinance. And if we have to have a mayor down there, I'll be there at the, at the, at the center, okay? I didn't realize we had that problem, but Brad's going to check on that right away. Okay. That ends the action items. Let's move on to the reports. Town attorney, anything further?
Just a sec, hold on. Mr. Mayor, uh, you've gone on long enough. I don't have anything more other than to wish board members, staff a really Merry Christmas and to thank them all for working through what's been a very difficult year.
Thank you, Brad. Have a Merry Christmas. Town administrator.
So postponing the, the in-person meetings will give us an opportunity to practice with our new AV that will be installed by the first of the year. So that will give us a solid several weeks to work on it and work out any kinks. So we'll be ready to hit the ground running when the time comes. Um, would also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and I can tell you, I absolutely love getting up and coming into work every day. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with you and in this amazing community. So wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Merry Christmas to you too. Anything from staff that we need to know about? Okay, board members. Anything? Trustee Gator.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So just a couple of things. First off, I did want to thank the members of the community for taking the time to come out and speak to the board. This is something that has been a constant thing as we are all here. As trustee Whitehouse said, we are all, as volunteers here, trying to work hard to do the best that we can to represent you. Uh, very much appreciate you taking the time to come out and let us know what you think. And please, you know, even if you're not, you don't love what we made the decision on, please come back and continue to talk to us. Don't just be like, I'm gonna tell you one time. Please continue to come and share with us. We want to. Please continue to come and share with us. We want to hear from you. Um, so I appreciate all of you taking the time out to be here today for that. Um, the second thing that I wanted to bring up is I know I did receive some emails from members of the community in regards to um, us making a statement as a town and trying to just say that we support our businesses. I know there are a lot of concerns around, could we actually end up causing additional problems or challenges or scrutiny for the businesses by doing so? Um, the one concern that I have is I've heard from members of the community. I have not heard from members of the business community. And so what I'd like to do is so that we can maybe have a conversation, is if we could have town staff actually maybe take time to reach out to some of the business owners and see, would they prefer that us just not say anything and they can just do what they do? Or would they actually like to see some more substantial show of support from the town? And so if the board is okay with that, I'd love to have town staff reach out to the business community to see, in this sense, obviously, I've heard from members of our community that they would like to see the town take a more active role in saying, we support your right to reopen, but I haven't heard from businesses. So if the board is okay with that, I'd like to have um Patty and her staff reach out to the town businesses so that we just have some more information, because obviously, we've heard from members of the community. Uh, but I would also like to hear from members of the business community as well.
Thank you, Trustee Gator. Anyone else? Yep?
Um, I wanted to give a heartfelt thank you um to the town staff. Um, a couple people have heard my verbatim feedback of, of, of things I've heard um from both the business community and individuals, but I kind of wanted to make that just overarching so everybody can hear it. Um, with the distribution of the CARES Act funding and then the way that that was done, uh, it was done so very efficiently and effectively with an amazing turnaround time where folks would submit an application and maybe still have questions or not know what to do. Um, these individuals are receiving phone calls from our staff, getting additional information. And essentially, we were, from, from the town perspective, saying, how can we help you? Help us help you. And um, the feedback I've gotten has been overwhelming from both the business community as well as from individuals who were able to take advantage of the uh utilities relief funds. Um, the customer service aspect from our staff members was outstanding. The delivery of these funds was outstanding, and you guys rocked it. It, I am just so proud that when I heard that feedback or when I was hugging people and they were in tears and they said, you guys saved my business. That, that, that's what you guys did. So thank you. Um, and then otherwise, for business support, follow all your businesses on social media. Um, they'll tell you if they're open, if they're not, how you can help them. If you want to know how businesses need help, they will tell you in social media.
Thank you, Trustee Kenny.
Do this, so.
Okay.
All everybody in social media. But thank you so much to our town staff. Giving you guys one day off for the year seems like so little i- in, in return for everything that you do for this town. Um, I appreciate you so much. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and have a wonderful new year, if I don't talk to you before then.
Thank you, Trustee Kenny. I'll make sure to pass that along to staff because that, that means a lot to them. They have worked really hard to make this program what it is. And in comparison to other communities, they have, you are right, they have killed it. They have killed it. So I will pass it along. And yes, and thank you for the extra day off. They are thrilled, including myself. So thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Jerome, you're good? Okay, Trustee Whitehouse, you good? Okay, uh, uh, just a couple quick things. Staff, you did a great job. Just to reiterate, the money and the funds you put out, big help, big plus. Uh, and those people that received it are just really happy about it. Trustee Jerome, Trustee Gator, appreciate the thought, the things you brought forward. We're going to circle back on all that, not going to let that go, okay? Uh, e- e- especially with regards to our strategic plan. Now we're going to follow up on that in our in-person meetings and, and get, get better engagement with our public and get them involved in what we're doing and have a, uh, uh, I'm looking forward to a great twenty-twenty-one, what I'm looking forward to. Want to get this year behind us and get started on the right foot, you know, with all the right things in place so that we can actually be effective and informative. Uh, and I do appreciate all the public comment. It was very uh, insightful tonight, actually. And uh, everybody have a great Christmas. If there's no other further comments or anything else, I'd like to go ahead and bring this meeting to Nedermer at nine oh six P M. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Merry Christmas. Have fun.